Okay. It is now 7:30. So I'm going to start the meeting. Good evening. Due to the state of emergency declared by the government of the state of New Jersey in the United States regarding COVID-19, this meeting is being held via video conference in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business. This board meeting is being streamed live via YouTube on the district website at www.evenet.org. In addition, members of the public who wish to provide comment at this meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering the URL and meeting ID and password that you see before you on the screen. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Individuals are welcome to provide comment during the good of the cause for the public portion of the meeting, and the board will hear public comment through Zoom. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. Will the secretary please call the roll?
This is Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of the public. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notices also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings except executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcasts. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose, and individuals should speak at the board's meeting to be aware of those videotaping rules. Good evening. We're going to start the evening out with our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. The New Jersey State Division of Academics and Performance is pleased to announce that East Brunswick Public Schools has been designated as a World Language Model Program for the 2020-2022 award period. East Brunswick School District will serve as a resource for other districts across the state and enable educators to explore exemplary practices, world language instruction, and assessment. Congratulations to Ruth Chang and the entire World Language. This past Monday, the district distributed nearly 8,000 meals to students. As a continued effort to assist the East Brunswick community, we are expanding the program to include EB resident students that attend both Middlesex County VOTAC and Hittickva Charter School. Again, to be eligible, attending those schools must live in East Brunswick and preorder meals through both Middlesex County VOTAC or Hittickva Charter School, wherever they attend. The next district grab-and-go meal pickup will be this Monday, May 18th, at designated schools. I would like to thank the team of workers, including child nutrition, bus drivers, school security officers, and Aramark, as well as Mr. Joe Crouchfeld, that have done an amazing job to make this a success. Just a reminder, the district is closed for Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th. This past week, members of the high school staff delivered graduation signs to our seniors. They were met with cheers, thank yous, and in some cases, happy tears. And I'd like to thank Dr. Vanilla, Matt Hannes, Glenn Pazinko, Christine Shea, Leslie Anderson, Christianazzo, and Ed Selby for making this special day for our students. And I'd like to take a moment to address the graduating class of 2020 and their families. I have heard from many of you, and I know Dr. Vanilla has too, and I think he's on the meeting with us tonight. I want to assure you that any perceived absence of communication about our graduation plans has not been because of lack of planning. In fact, we have and continue to plan options based on conditions we cannot forecast at this moment for June 17th. We are aware of changing state directives and permissions regarding graduation for the class of 2020, the latest which came just yesterday. We are working to make the best and safest graduation possible within the limitations imposed by the state and New Jersey Department of Education. At some point, we will need to make a final decision based on requirements at that time. Please trust that as educators and parents, the Board of Education and administration want to make the celebration of accomplishments of the class of 2020 the best it can possibly be. You are a class like no other. Like everything else EB, we are striving for excellence even during this uncertain time. When we have relative assurances we can deliver what we promise, Dr. Vanilla will communicate with the entire senior class and their families. Until then, stay safe, stay strong. EB school strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. We're going to begin the evening with a presentation. NJSLA's Science Results Spring 2019. Dr. Valeski, would you like to give some introduction?
Sorry, Mrs. Becker. Dr. Bowley will be doing the presentation along with Mrs. D. Benedetti, I believe?
Yes, and Mr. Higgins.
Oh, Mr. Higgins, okay. Thank you.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. So, as Dr. Valeski said, I'm Joyce Bowley, Assistant Superintendent of Academics, and I'm here this evening with Mr. Ryan Higgins, our K-12 Supervisor of Science, and Mrs. Jessica D. Benedetti, our grades eight through 12 Science Department Chairperson. This evening, we will share with you the results from our spring 2019 New Jersey Student Learning Assessments for Science, and we will certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have at the end of our presentation. Next slide, please. Last spring marked the first administration of scored New Jersey Student Learning Assessments for Science. These assessments were administered to our students in grades five, eight, and 11, and individual school student scores will be sent home as soon as we return. In our next slide, there are three main factors to highlight when considering these scores. First, the assessment for our 11th graders has changed significantly to include biological, physical, and earth science, whereas in the past, the assessment only contained biology content. Second, the format has significantly changed to include technology-enhanced questions. And finally, the questions are now all phenomenon-based, which requires students to apply their content knowledge while using core ideas as well as science and engineering practices. Next slide. As we consider the scores, it's also important to note that this new assessment is quite different than the old NJASK Science. The NJSLA is much more rigorous. Students are now required to apply their science knowledge and skills instead of straight memorization of the content. And at this time, the state is still reviewing its scoring practices, and we expect changes still to come. Mrs. D. Benedetti will elaborate on this at the end of the presentation as she served on the NJSLA Advisory Committee for the state. In our next slide, we see our overall NJSLA science proficiency as compared to the average scores throughout the state. We can clearly see that our scores are well above the state average. Our next slide shows us our fifth graders' elementary proficiency as compared to state averages. Again, we well exceed the state average in all of our elementary schools. The following slide depicts our eighth and 11th graders' proficiency as compared to state averages, and once again, we are well exceeding the state averages in our secondary schools. The next slide is a snapshot of our fifth graders' proficiency by subgroups, followed by a snapshot of our eighth graders' proficiency by subgroups, and finally, a snapshot of our 11th graders' proficiency by subgroups. Our big takeaways from these scores on our next slide. Our students are performing well above state averages. We notice equitable gender performance that improves with each grade band. We notice an equitable performance across earth, physical, and life sciences. We also have noticed a drop from elementary to junior high for all students, and particularly in our subgroup populations, both here, in our district, and across the state. So, the Science Department continues to strive for excellence in science instruction for all of our students. To that end, several initiatives are being implemented to meet that goal. For our youngest scientists, new science curriculum units are being purchased for our K-5 classrooms, which are aligned with the next-generation science standards and support phenomenon-based science learning. The new units include differentiated supports to meet the needs of all learners, including our subgroup populations. The Science Department is also working to develop performance assessments for all elementary and middle school classrooms, which closely align with the NJSLA science assessment. Ongoing professional collaboration and learning for all of our science teachers is always a top priority. For our middle school scientists, the Science Department will continue its work around aligning standards and building 3D assessments in classroom activities, continuing to review and refine sequencing to ensure greater coherence in all grade levels. For example, the addition of life science to the grade eight curriculum will better support students as they move into ninth-grade biology. And at our high school, the Science Department will continue the work of developing assessments that stress the application of concepts versus pure memorization. They will continue to develop phenomena-based biology, chemistry, and physics courses that infuse earth science standards. They will continue to strengthen vertical articulation between the levels of our courses, and they will continue the work of focusing on strengthening differentiation in all of our science classes. We would like to take this opportunity to thank our Board of Education and superintendent for all that you do to support world-class science instruction in all classrooms in our East Brunswick Public Schools. Thank you so much. Ryan and Jess, do you have anything to add at this time?
Is that no? Or is it, are we open for questions from the board yet? Dr. Bowley?
We can. It was taking us a second to be able to unmute.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to the presentation before we accept questions?
I just wanted to thank the boards for their continued support, the Science Department, especially for approving the new curriculum kits for the elementary. We are confident will help us continue to exceed the state performance goals in science, so thank you for that continued support.
I also wanted to express my gratitude to the Board of Education for your continued support of the Science Department. And from my experience on the New Jersey Department of Education Middle School Science Assessment Advisory Committee, I can say that the question-writing process and the questions that appear on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment are both continuously being analyzed, reflected upon, and revised. There is also an ongoing effort by the committee to continue to calibrate the scoring of each question. The committee continues to work diligently to produce an assessment that will function to guide science instruction in New Jersey schools. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Bowley.
I actually have a question, Joyce. Going, a slide that showed the proficiency percentages for all of the elementary schools. There was a slight discrepancy between some of the elementary schools. Not a great one, but I remember that there were a few that really seemed, the percentage of proficiency seemed much higher than the others. So, we have eight elementary schools with the same curriculum. Teachers receive the same professional development. Obviously, the level of learning and ability differs from child to child, let alone from school to school, but how would you explain a discrepancy between proficiency levels from school to school?
Well, there's many factors. Equity for all of our students is, you know, always our top priority. Ensuring that all teachers have all the materials that they need to successfully engage students in doing science, as well as the professional development is also another critical piece. So, the science team is certainly, you know, digging into the data that's presented to them and trying to get to root causes of where differences may be presenting. Anything to add to that, Ryan, or?
No, I think you really hit it. We appreciate the data that we do get back from the state so we can look and make sure that we are providing an equitable education experience throughout all the schools. We'll use that data to guide, you know, where we do focus our professional development, our walkthroughs, and our assistance to the science education.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons had his hand up.
Yeah, Mrs. Becker. So, I noticed that statewide, the proficiency scores are not good for science. Is that a science thing, or is that, how does that compare to other areas of curriculum? I guess it's part from Dr. Bowley and others. It's just 25% is what I was seeing for state, so what's going on there?
So, we do believe that it's a reflection on the tool, the instrument itself. Jess, do you want to talk a little bit about being on that scoring panel? Yes. So, one of the things that was new is this is the first time that the students were taking this test on the computer versus on paper, and when this happened, they used a lot of new, really cool tech tools for our students to be able to do in an assessment, but they might not have been used to doing it that way. So, where the students have to not only analyze a claim and statements that went with it, but they have to now drag and drop all the pieces of that statement to different places when they're answering a question, there's very, very, very few straightforward multiple-choice questions on this test. There's actually like guidelines that limit the number that can be in each section, so more of the test involves questions where there's basically three dropdown menus to fill in the blank with three choices. So, there's a lot more going on, and if they get one piece of that wrong, even if they got the other two pieces correct, they get the whole question incorrect. So, there's a lot more both content knowledge and science skills that need to go into every question, and a lot of students just aren't used to being asked questions that weigh on a test in their classroom. So, that's definitely why assessment, the way that we're writing our assessments is something that we want to focus on because we want our students to be able to be used to being asked questions in that way.
Okay. Thanks.
And Jess, you do anticipate further calibration of scoring, correct? But on the state level? Absolutely. We were already doing a lot of revisions in February.
Thanks.
I can see all the board members. Does anyone else have a question? And raise your hand, please.
Vicky, if I could just elaborate on your question a little bit, I think that another factor to layer into that answer is the work we're doing around our subgroups and understanding the population in each school and how that may look different and what we need to do to support all learners.
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you very much. We have an incredibly dedicated science team from the top down. The three of you are incredible staff on the ground, and we're very happy and proud to support this program.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We're kind of living a living science, scientific experiment right now. So, perhaps it'll be studying us next year.
Maybe psychology, sociology.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on the lease purchase financing for replacement of windows and doors on various school district buildings. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on the lease purchase financing through Zoom. Access is available. Are we going to be able to see the screen, or do you want me to read it?
No, we'll put the screen up.
Okay. There will be a screen showing you the URL to enter into the web browser of your computer. There we go. Thank you so much, Bernie. And you'll also see the meeting ID and password. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the board. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board on this topic only? That being the lease purchase financing for replacement of windows and doors on various school district buildings?
Mrs. Becker, I'd like to first, if I could first make a couple of introductory remarks on this.
Please.
This is a, there's an action item on the agenda this evening. A couple of important points. First, the replacement is a necessary replacement at several of our schools, which include Frost, Warrensdorfer, Chittick, it's the name of, oh, and Churchill Junior High School. These are to assist with controlling indoor air quality, particularly since the introduction of the air conditioning systems throughout the buildings. It had, the new air conditioning systems have caused us to have some challenges with indoor air quality, so the window replacements and the exterior door replacements will do a great deal in helping to mitigate those. One of the important things with regard to this financing is that it does not affect the budget. It is funded through our capital reserve. Capital reserve funds cannot be used for any other purpose except capital purposes.
Thank you very much. Again, are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the board on this topic only? We will be having the regular good of the cause to the public, but right now, it's just open for comment on this topic only. Bernie, do you see any one in a queue?
No, no one in the queue.
Okay. I close this portion. And now we have the good of the cause to the public, the regular one. As a reminder, again, members of the public who wish to provide comment at this meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system, and free district access is available by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password you see on the screen in front of you. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves, to protect the privacy of all students and staff. Concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Comments are limited to three minutes a person. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board tonight?
We have one individual, Dana Zimbicki, who has requested to speak.
Great. Name and record, name and address for the record, please.
Dana Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, I'm speaking tonight out of great concern for 73 members of the East Brunswick Education Association who have told that their jobs will be eliminated as of June 30th this year. I understand the economic crisis we're experiencing, and I know tough decisions need to be made. However, I do believe our students come first, and I also believe in shared sacrifice. In this current budget, 73 EBA positions, most of which have direct student contact, have been eliminated, while only one central office administration position totaling $170,000, $175,000 of savings has been eliminated. Not one principal or supervisor position has been eliminated. This is not shared sacrifice or in the best interest of our students. It's heartbreaking to see this inequity of patching holes in our budget on the backs of the EBA unit, who are loved by our students. One of the school aides eliminated has worked for the district for 26 and a half years and is a graduate of the East Brunswick High School. An instructional assistant has worked in the district for 24 years and now will not be eligible for health insurance or her pension by one year. There are faces that go along with each of these cuts, faces that will be missed by our students. I was also shocked to hear Dr. Valeski say, last Thursday at 1:00 PM, the grounds department was being eliminated. This department has slowly been decimated over the past 10 years. As of February, this department only had three grounds technicians employed and one grounds helper, who took care of the fields, the grounds, the courtyards in our school. What is most disturbing to me is to find out that in fact, the grounds department has not been eliminated, just the EBA positions. All the management roles still exist. By the way, the EBA staff members in this department have been, have a combined total of service for our district of over 40 years. Additionally, on May 12th, the East Brunswick Public Schools received an additional $529,075 from the CARES Act. This money that you did not know was coming when you made these staff cuts, therefore, it is not delineated in the budget that was presented last week. With the addition of this money, approximately a quarter of the $2.1 million deficit could be made up, and I hope that you would consider, reconsider the decision that you've made with our staff. So, we'll end with this. I understand this financial crisis, but I do not understand why the members of the East Brunswick Education Association are so valued that there are absolutely no shared sacrifice.
Time.
And our staff.
Time.
Thank you very much, Dana.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I would like Mr. Juliana to explain the CARES money that we just got notification of and some of the specific purposes that are aligned with that funding.
Absolutely.
So, there are a few components, and we have not had the time since we just received notification to analyze the application of those funds. We are receiving, the township of East Brunswick, including its non-public schools, are receiving $529,000. The district will be able to utilize approximately $500,000 of those resources. The various application of those funds could be in the areas of technology to support distance learning, health and mental health services to support our students during this crisis. So, there are a variety of areas. These resources are one-time resources. So there are a variety of areas. These resources are one-time resources. They are not ongoing funds that will repeat from year to year. And that is an important consideration as the district assesses how to best support our students with these resources in a one-time manner.
So in other words, the money is given with stipulations on what it can be spent on and what it cannot be spent on?
Yeah.
Correct.
And, and one of the, one of the conditions that we find ourselves in is we do not know what our return to school will look like. Or, you know, when that will be phased or tiered in terms of our capacity to house students, transport students, a variety of things. So as we discussed with the board, as we discussed with finance committees previous to the board's action, these are very tough decisions. These are tough decisions that, that have outcomes that affect real people and I understand that. But they are also decisions that have to be made to meet the financial obligations of the district long term.
Mrs. Becker, I could speak a remark that's relevant to this issue.
Sure.
We, we say that the money's earmarked, but just remember, to the extent it's earmarked, we could always take general fund revenue and use it for something else and use this for the earmarked purpose. I mean, we have to be clear about that, just so we know in our mind. Not really earmarked in that we could just put it to what it's supposed to be used for and then that frees up other money from the budget if the board wanted to look at something else. I just make that observation.
The key to remember is that the resources will not repeat themselves in the subsequent year.
Understand.
They are a one-time resource. So, and intended for us to mostly address the issues that we're facing to basically allow for a reopening and caring of our, of our students.
Understand. I just, generally, as you're looking at staffing, now there could be extraneous reasons, but I, I don't want to tinker with somebody on the eve of pension either. So just, that's my view. It's what I'm hearing. You know, it could be different facts, but just, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address the public?
No one else has messaged to ask to speak.
Okay, then I will close the portion. Moving on to our agenda. The Board of Education items. I'd like a motion to combine items one through three.
So move Mark.
Move by Mark?
Second, Li Wu.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to the community programs. Can I please have a motion for item one, Contract Educational Services Center? Moved by?
Mr. Simmons?
Still me.
Close. Move by Todd, second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to financial services. Can I please have a motion to combine items one through five?
So move Jeff.
Move by Jeff? Second by Todd. Is there any discussion? Susanna?
Question. Just a question on item five, travel. So I'm just wondering how, you know, and staff development continues to be very important. Are they continuing to do, do this, these were sessions, I think, for, for training? Like are they, how are they handling that in this time period? Are they remote or?
I see Mrs. Chang for, scheduled for a session in June. So we're not sure at this time if that session.
So it, it may or may not take place or I'm just wondering if they're moving to remote training at this time. But, you know, training continues to be very important. I'm just wondering if they've made adjustments to the approach to training if travel.
Mrs. Chu? We, we discussed today about, about travel and training and about looking at each opportunity being in a virtual environment. So they, you know, I don't want to be sending people out to, to other sites as we return. That's going to be limited or eliminated for at least a while. I'm sorry, there was background. If you could hear me or not.
Yeah, so I presume we're, we're approving the, the, the training, although depending on the situation, it may or may not take place.
Correct.
Return remote.
Correct.
And hopefully they'll move to remote training so that the training can take place and not, you know, not be lost. Okay, thank you.
So any other discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yeah.
Ms. Gwass?
Yeah.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Mary, yes.
Noted. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the human resources agenda, can I please have a motion for items one and two? Okay, motion by Barbara, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Or mute?
Sorry about that, yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yeah.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion under staff development for item one, Certificated Staff Evaluation Rubrics?
Motion.
Barbara, second by Susanna. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Under our student services, can I please have a motion for item one, Confirmed Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Incidents Report?
So move.
Move by Todd, second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Ms. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston? And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion under our transportation services agenda for items one through four?
So move Jeff.
Move by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? I actually have a question. We are approving bid renewals for student transportation services. The only thing we can go on is based on what we expect would be the normal transportation capacity requirements that we would have in any September. Since we're not quite sure what school will or may look like in September in terms of what will be allowed in terms of building capacity, classroom capacity, if we're talking split sessions, if we're talking staggered sessions. The bid renewals that we are voting on tonight, they are contracts. If our transportation changes, needs change, will we be able to be flexible with these bid renewals?
Mr. Juliana, you want to answer that?
The, the short answer to that is, it depends. The, the, the law is quite clear with regard to which contracts have flexibility in terms of adjustments during the course of the year and then which ones would require to be rebid because of substantive changes to the routes. So it will remain to be seen what happens, what we come up with in terms of a plan, the guidance that's provided by the state, whether any special legislation is passed as we've seen many, many pieces of legislation passed in recent weeks. So there are many issues tied to this and so there is no clear-cut answer to your question.
Thank you. I, I know it's hard to have a crystal ball. Thank you Bernie. Jeff?
Yeah, Bernie, I have a question. Is there a time constraint based on the law when this contract needs to be in place by?
Well, the, the issues are that if we do not renew contracts and we don't make our commitments back to the contractors at a later date, they could pull, pull away from the contract and seek other contracts and decide not to renew. So it is in our interests to ensure that we align as many of our contracts as possible so that we have the coverage.
And within, within the contract, is there any, any clause that, that addresses what, what Mrs. Becker was just speaking of? Anything about based on current conditions or is this the same standard contract that was issued last year?
It is the contract that is dictated by the state. There is a form of contract with all the requirements. We don't get to make new requirements to address this issue. So it, it, it depends on what will happen in terms of changes in routes, destinations, if we're going to establish new routes. If we have, for example, multiple tiers or multiple sessions so that we have a portion of the students going from point A to the school and then we're repeating to some extent that route for another segment of students. Essentially what we've done is create, created a second route. That's a second cost. So there are various issues that are going to need to be vetted, not only here, but at the state level because there will be an impact upon transportation costs.
And that's why I wanted to, I believe I saw Matt Jacoby, our, our attorney earlier. Matt, I was wondering if you could address this for a minute because I think what we'd all like to think is if the requirements dictate lead to some sort of split session, staggered sessions, et cetera, that the Board of Ed will have flexibility to revisit a contract in view of revised transportation needs.
I think, I think that's correct. What's going on right now, as you know, when the pandemic hit mid-spring semester, the legislature passed a law known as A3904, which mandated that we continue making payments to all the contracted service providers for all fixed costs. So we're in the process, Bernie and I, of negotiating that with all these, all these vendors. We're going to be taking precautions and we're actually, different entities are reaching out to the legislature so that this doesn't repeat itself where we're not, for example, if schools are closed in the fall, they say we can't open in September, we don't want to be spending taxpayer money on services that aren't being rendered. What's interesting is the law specifically states that you're not allowed to spend money on services not rendered except this A3904 obviated that for the period of the remainder of the school year. The, the one thing that we are doing is we are reaching out to the legislatures to discuss the exact impact if you have to go to a tiered system or, you know, split school because of social distancing, how are we going to accomplish that? The one benefit that you guys do have is you do have a fairly big bus fleet that you own and you have your own driver. So that is something we will have to look at, but again, right now there's not any legislation, but it is being considered right now at the state level as how to address this. Because Bernie's right, i- if you do have to double your routes, you're going to basically be doubling your costs with your contracted service providers because you're paying for the employees, but you're also paying for the wear and tear of the vehicles and the fuel.
Jeff?
Winston has his hand up.
Yeah, I see Jeff.
So, so to Matt, I mean, how real is the concern in what Bernie's saying if this were not to be addressed completely right now based on what you just said on ongoing legislation surrounding this very issue? I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see the district put into a, a contract obligation based on the higher likelihood that those, those parameters are not going to suffice and things are going to change. So is there, is it a clear and imminent danger that if we don't approve this tonight, that we're going to lose our bus company? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, I, I, so this is what I recommend that you do. There's a, there, there's been, even before the pandemic, there's a shortage of bus drivers in the state of New Jersey, a huge shortage because getting the CDL to operate a passenger school bus is very, very difficult. So school districts are scramble every year to get sufficient drivers to do their regular transportation needs. So you don't want to miss out on that. I think that the, you know, we, we experienced something very unique in that this all broke in mid-March during the middle of an operational school year. My guess is, is that we will have guidance from the state in the, in the summer so that we can then pivot, make decisions based on these contracts and if changes have to be made and what the financial impacts are. So my recommendation to you guys is I would absolutely secure your contracts now so that you have the commitment from the, the transportation providers to provide the transportation. And then we can make whatever adjustments seem to be made if the school closure goes on into the fall or if we have to then go out and bid additional routes in the school year. The benefit, Jeff, is, for example, we have, you're going to contract with all these providers. So these providers have dedicated buses and personnel to us. So if we have to go out to these providers and say, we now need to add 50 new routes throughout each, each week, we already have providers that are contracted with us, we can then amend those contracts and add those additional routes or lengthen the day. We'd be in much worse position, I think frankly, is if we don't have contract, we hold off and all these contractors are out. And then the benefit, the downside is, is that then you're going to be at the whim. Because right now you have contracts where we're renewing contracts with the, a small escalator for fuel cost. I think that you, you're in much better shape to lock it in and then we can make the decisions having the resources available to us as opposed to scrambling, trying to find the resources. Because you might be in a situation where there might not be resources.
And obviously.
Given, given the mass, there's been a mass amount of layoffs in the private bus contracting service area that we've been seeing. I don't know if these drivers are going to be coming back, so I would, I would absolutely recommend that you guys secure these contracts.
And obviously, we're not going to be the only school district dealing with this. If, if the mandate leads to some kind of a split session or reduced capacity, everybody, every school district will be dealing with and every school district is in the process of voting on contracts for next year. So we're not going to be unique, so there'll be strength in numbers, so.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other discussion? The secretary, please call the roll.
This is a voice vote.
Yes, it is. You're absolutely right. You pass that test again Bernie. Every once in a while, I like to throw that in.
I knew you were going to try that on me.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Very good group. Okay. Is Rachel, our student representative, us tonight?
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Yay. Hello, Rachel.
Hi Rachel.
How are you? We're good. We can't wait to hear how you are and how our students are.
Yeah, so, um, we had AP exams this week, so that went really well. The teachers really prepared us for it despite being in quarantine. And they had a lot of like open sessions for us to hop on Zoom and ask any questions we might have. So that was really helpful. Um, we also were really excited to have the lawn signs delivered this week. It just cheered everyone up a little bit. People are posting pictures of it. It's just something the seniors can enjoy. Um, we're also having to submit pictures to the student council if we want to with like, um, a shirt for the school we're going to, or like dressing as the profession we want to go into. And they're making a slideshow, so it's just a nice thing to, um, kind of like honor the achievement of getting to graduation. Um, and then a lot of the kids who are like sophomores and juniors are just looking into online summer programs and things like that because they don't have the opportunities they usually would have. Um, but everyone's just being really optimistic. Um, we obviously know you guys are making a decision on graduation, things like that. So we just really appreciate everybody's effort in this situation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Are there any committee reports, information items, and the good of the cause for the board? I don't see anybody. Bernie, you see anyone? I don't?
Do not.
Okay, seeing none. We do have a need for a closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meetings, and these subjects are within exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act. The Board of Education intends to discuss the matters as follows. Those items in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session will be estimated at sixty minutes, after which a public meeting of all shall reconvene, and action will not be taken. Can I please have a motion for going into closed session?
So moved.
Move by Li Wu, second by Todd. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I want to remind the board that they need to leave this and then, um, log into the closed session meeting. And I thank everyone for joining us tonight. Please stay safe. Thank you.